Ready? The next item on the agenda is to discuss the 100th Street reconstruction schedule update. Matt.
Thank you. Just wanted to get in front of council tonight and provide a little bit of an update on our 100th Street project. It's been a while since there's, there's been an update back to council. There's been a couple of developments through the Iowa DOT process, which is, which is going to affect our big letting schedule as well as construction schedule. The project does have $750,000 federal monies in the, into it. That started out as a swap project. And then somewhere middle of last year, it kind of switched back to a full federally funded project, which threw in some different requirements and we've kind of had to, to work through that. Part of it, we've had a little bit of a NEPA shipo slowdown at the federal level, much like what we experienced with the easements through Camp Dodge. And then property acquisition that, you know, we, we've talked about that and we're completing that. We'll, I think we'll come to a successful resolution prior to even the letting. So tonight I've got Mike Danberg with SEH, he's the lead project engineer for the project. He'll provide a little bit of an update on the project as well as the letting and the construction schedule.
Thanks, Matt, Mayor and Council. First, I guess they weren't complimentary of the engineer, just the city. No, no, you're, I'm sure. Okay, so that second page of the PowerPoint that you have basically is that project overview. And you guys have seen this, I think we were here February 6th. That's the same slide, it just talks about what the project is. And I just like to leave that in as we do these updates. So in case anybody's got any new questions, but we're going to the four lane divided urban. You know, 1,000 feet north of 54th and 150 feet south of 62nd. We've got the new traffic signal going in at Windsor Parkway where the school is. We're going to put new storm sewer in and a big box culvert there down by that Adam Ridge Pond. That's part of that storm water analysis that we've done. We will be replacing water main basically from Windsor Parkway North. Basically anywhere the water main, existing water main was going to end up under the new roadway as we widen. We're going to put new water main in. And then we've talked about the 10 foot shared use path, basically running from the south end. On the east side up to Windsor Parkway, we'll cross over to the west side. And then it'll continue north up to 62nd, that existing trail. So again, just a quick overview of the project, I know you guys probably are aware of everything, just wanted to touch on that. The next sheet is the project staging. And again, when we were here on February 6th, we had this similar picture with this color code of the project staging. And so on top, so it's a split screen on top, it was what we brought to you on February 6th, with what, what our plan was. And basically that original schedule had us bidding in June of 23, so coming up here. And, and we were going to take advantage of that and build stage one, which was basically that south end in 23. And that would kind of open up 24 for all of that orange, green and blue on that top slide. So, um, you know, it was kind of a nice schedule to be able to get some of the work done in 23. You know, kind of guarantee us that we can get all the work done in that one season. As Matt indicated, we've, we've run into some scheduling issues with DOT, with the process. And so we're kind of going back to what you see as the current plan on the bottom, which is basically the original plan that we had way back early on, which is we'll, we'll start on the north end. Come and do the intersection 2A for Windsor Parkway when school's out. I think 2B will get done however they can fit it in, the contractor will kind of have some leeway with that. And then we'll end with stage three now, which is the south end. And, and kind of the reason we set it up that way again. And, and I changed it a little bit, that White Oak Lane will be in stage 2B. And so it'll get constructed next year for sure. But if weather, if contractor, if unforeseen things happen in 24, and it doesn't look like we can get done, the city now has control to say, okay, stop, we're not tearing up stage three. So that we got to deal with that over winter. If, if again, there's some unforeseen delays, which you know, happens in our world. Just wanted to give you a quick update on, and again, we're back to what the original staging was, which is attacking the north end, which right now will be in the spring of 24. So kind of giving you that update, we'll talk about the schedule here real quick.
Can I interrupt just real quick? Of the two plans that you had on there, I attended a informational meeting about three weeks ago. Which plan was presented to the audience at that time?
Top one.
The top one?
Yes. So the last, the first public meeting, we told them we were probably looking at the bottom. And unfortunately then we had some changes with the NEPA shipo fed aid. So then we ended up with the June letting and we showed the public, the property owner meeting that we were going to do the top one.
So, so I'm assuming, and I'll wait for it, when you're going to talk about how you're going to inform the community? Thank you.
So on the schedule, I guess, we don't, I don't have anything in here about another property owner meeting. I know we have another one planned. Yeah, project meeting for the property owners. Generally, I think the next one would be after the bid letting. We will inform the property owners again. We like to, we like to do that third one, once we have a contractor on board and we understand what the contractor's plan is so that we can give them, again, kind of the official word about what the plan is instead of us, you know, making some assumptions at, at the engineering phase.
I, I agree, and I have to tell the rest of the council, um, from the comment, based on the way they are laying out these stages, the biggest concern with the people in the audience wasn't so much which section was going to be closed when, but that it wasn't all going to be closed at the same time, that they were going to have access to that intersection, that it was going to not close several intersections at the same time. So the fact that things have been switched up, I think as long as we inform them that there had to be a change based on construction scheduling. I don't think there's going to be a lot of unhappiness as long as those intersections to get from east to west or west to east are open.
Yeah, our plan is, I think our biggest challenge is going to be around the schools, Horizon and Summit. I know that when we do that phase one, if you go back, it, it really affects Century Trace, which is the, which is this subdivision here, because they've got an out onto 100th. So now this is going to end up forcing those folks out here onto Windsor Parkway. And if, if you've been out there when school lets out, it stacks up on the road and that was one of the concerns that they shared with us. So we're still working through that process. We may have to put a no parking on one side to get folks through there. Or limit that to no parking so that people are not parking on the street during certain hours. We're still, still working through that. We'll have a little more time to work through that. But that was really the main concern that I think that they shared with us. That and making sure that Windsor Parkway doesn't get shut down during that school time, which is going to be staged. And we've always planned to not do that in first schools out and to have it open prior to school starting back up. The other thing that this allows us to do with our letting is generally traffic signal pulls are anywhere from 24 to about 30 weeks out. So when we actually are able to let the project later this year, we can get the contractor to go ahead and get those ordered in anticipation to have them here by the time that we need to construct that intersection.
Yeah, no, and that'll be, that'll be really nice. We, there probably will be a chance, we'll maybe have to place some stored materials. But again, that's, that's better than getting to a point where with schools out, we want to work on the intersection, but we don't have the materials. So that'll be good.
The other thing, going back to Mike's comment as well, sorry to jump in here. But what this will allow us to do is once we get the contractor on board, they may be able to, or they may want yet to take off and do the water main relocation, which is off of the current roadway. So there may still be some work that could potentially happen yet this year to speed the process up next year. Really waiting to get a contractor on board, see what they want to do. Because this is a DOT project, they do have working days. So what they see is they've got free working days that aren't counted towards their schedule. So they could jump in and possibly do some work, but we're waiting to get them on board before we go back to the public. We will post and through social media and our website that the project is delayed, but we'll let them know that just through, through social media and our website as well.
So we've kind of, we've kind of hit on the schedule a little bit, but I just wanted to be able to lay out the side by side of the schedule just so, so you folks had an understanding of what happened. So on the left is what we call the previous again, which would have been in February, what we were intending to follow. And so this all kind of goes back to this swap to Fed Aid change. And, and I'll, I'll give you just a little update on, on how that happened. So back in May, early June of 22, you know, the cities, the larger cities were informed that they were going to have to go to Fed Aid for anything that was bid after January of 23. The, the smaller communities are still using swaps. So the DOT made a decision to help out the smaller communities that were less sophisticated with the swap, which basically is a lot easier and a lot less of that NEPA shipoey stuff going on. And the more sophisticated, larger communities, they, they were told to go Fed Aid.
And we would be in the, with the larger communities.
Well, yeah.
How do you, I'm not sure, how do they break that down? Because they're not like entitlement city, but.
Basically, if there's an, if you have an MPO, which a metropolitan planning organization, if that's how you're dealing with it, then you're within that larger community. If you've got a regional plan, planning agency like the COGS, then they, they figure you don't have as much staff and people to deal with such things. So that's how they made that determination. So with that, when it goes to Fed Aid, basically it brings NEPA shipo back into our schedule. We had to submit a concept statement, preliminary plans. That concept statement goes down to the DOT, they then look at the project and determine, are there NEPA shipo? So environmental or historic property issues. So, you know, in, in the time that this was all going on, we were thinking federal, February 23 letting, which the DOT had sent out some correspondence that NEPA wouldn't be an issue with that. But we submitted the concept statement, we found out at the end of September, they wanted to do an archaeological survey of the site. I don't know what, what caused them to want to do that. I, I did have a conversation with them and they kind of look at any project that's got a lot of different right away takings. They may sometimes do that, but in our case, we're taking just small slivers. And so it didn't make sense, but in the end they make that decision. So we had the archaeological survey done, submitted it in December. We got response back at the end of January that they wanted a revision done, which basically they were asking about one particular project. And, you know, the impact to that, that property. If we were going to take all the trees down in front of it. And so it's one of our larger fee title acquisitions that we have in the project. They were asking about that and some other things. So we, we turned that around, resubmitted it, I think on February 7th, which was when we submitted our first set of check plans, or the check plans for that letting we were on.
I just want to make it clear that you're saying that the DOT is concerned about taking down trees?
Well.
I just, there's, this Martin moved over to DOT, it's good to hear you promoted.
Or about the, the impact of the property and, and whether that property had any historic value and whether the trees were going to change, you know? So they're going through that due diligence as the shipo people. So we turned that around and it's about in that time. So, so we were planning to submit check plans, which we had submitted check plans in October. We changed the schedule then right in that timeframe, so the DOT didn't review our check plans. We then submitted check plans again in February, um, which again would put us in that June letting. We, we started getting discussions back from the DOT that we needed NEPA shipo clearance and we didn't have it. And so we couldn't submit check plans. And we've gone through quite a, quite a round with the DOT. The, the TPMS site, which is a transportation project management site that we use for their projects, the schedule and that was wrong and it was saying we could get clearance at final plans, not at check plans. And so we, we worked our due diligence with the DOT. Ultimately, they did not review our check plans and now it's, it's kind of the reason we finally got NEPA shipo clearance on March 29th. But we were too late to stay on that original schedule. So we're back again with the change in the staging, with the change in the schedule, just based on that. So really that, that previous schedule had us bidding in June, we talked about it, a little bit of construction in the fall. And then the majority of the construction at 24, on that right side, just kind of going through that. Now we have check plans are, are due tomorrow. So we got, we got that clearance on March 29th. So the first time we can submit is tomorrow, April 4th for check plans. Final plans in May, DOT letting August 15th. And then we talk about those four stages that we showed up there. I show here stage one, everything's starting in April of 24. Matt did hit on it a little bit. We'll, we'll, the, the DOT will probably set a late start date, we'll push them a little bit for that April of 24. But the con, we're, we're going to push for a free winter work, it's called. And so the contractor will have the ability to start and do a bunch of work from probably when the contracts are done in late September, all the way until that April 1st late start date. And so it's, it's kind of an incentive where they can go out there. One of the things that's always a big deal is the, the felling of the trees because of the bat situation. We have to fell trees between October 1 and March 31. And so that allows the contractor go out and do that. And so it, it, it comes back to, we're going to have to figure out what that contractor thinks he's willing to take on. Could it be water main? We've talked about potentially that box culvert being done within that free winter work. We just have to work through the, the logistics of that and make sure that we're not closing any roads over the winter during, during the winter season. But I, I think there's a lot of avenues that the contractor can come back to us with that will give us a jumpstart on getting all this work done in 24. So from that standpoint, I like the August letting, it gives us that window. So that's what we're hoping for. And so that, yeah, that gets us into stage one, starting in April of 24. And then we'll work through basically to the end of stage three, which again, I put on there, September of 24 roughly to November of 24, city could push us 25. Again, if we feel like we're not going to be able to get it done based on how the projects went so far, we'll have that ability built into the plans.
Yeah, we did something similar to this on 57th, uh, when we were doing east of Merle Hay reconstruction. We had a long stretch between Beaver and Merle Hay. And what we did was if they didn't hit a certain area or a certain station number or get, basically have the rest of the project be able to be completed prior to winter getting here. Now we all know it's Iowa and winter kind of throws itself around from time to time. I mean, we've had snow as early as Halloween or, or before then. But, you know, if they were to reach a certain point and we think that we can get that done, then we would, we would go ahead and shoot for that. If we think that we're running into weather and we've, we'd not going to make it, then we wouldn't push our luck and, and tear up the roadway and potentially get caught with having that tore up all, all winter. We like to try and keep our projects to where we can drive the roads in the winter and not have them shut down. So, um, it, it's, it's unfortunate, but this is where we're at through the process. And just wanted to give counsel an update and answer any questions that you may have.
Also a question.
Yeah, so thanks, Matt, appreciate that for the studio. Couple of questions, you said DOT letting can happen, I guess 15th, you might start reconstruction during August sometime after that?
So the letting would be August 15th. And then the, so this is a DOT project, so they have to turn around the contracts and that can take a little longer than a month to do through their process. So wouldn't have any construction probably like Mike mentioned until late September. If we got them on board and we talked about doing some, some of that water main relocation or some of that work that would happen off of a roadway.
Right, right, late September. So that's the schools on and there are two schools in there. So are you closing the road for construction or? What, what are your plans to make?
Well, we, we don't know that just yet. Until we get a contractor on board, we probably wouldn't want to get anything closed that late in the season. But at the same point, if they want to come in and do the box culvert that goes underneath the roadway, then we may want to entertain that, then they can put a temporary patch back over that box culvert for the winter, get the road back open and then they're that much ahead of the game come the springs happen.
All right, fair enough, appreciate that. My concern is basically the school zone and I might catch one of those schools and I, I know the traffic up there, it gets crazy. And so if you're constructing, they send roads blocking on 100th Street, they're always Windsor Parkway, the other one or somewhere other side, right? They're allowed to come to school. So that's my question is that, the, how are we going to manage that traffic when your roads are blocked? Either at the pre-construction or during the construction? That could be something that, and I see this timeline says April 24th, August 24th. April's school is still in session, April and May. So there'll be two months worth of people. Traffic.
Yeah, that, that road will be closed during school at some point. The, the goal is to keep that intersection open so they can have access from the east to west. That connects the neighborhood, the Glenstone neighborhood to the west. Keeps that open so that they can move through there. And then the other direction would be to come up 94th to Windsor and come in that direction as well. Or you can even come off of White Oak down to 93rd and.
I can't remember 94th very well, is that, that the residential road, right?
Yeah, it's a, it's a residential road, it's the stoplight right before you get to 100.
Okay.
We'll have a project detour up when we close 100th. And so, you know, we know how that goes sometimes too, but hopefully some kind of not local traffic or, or maybe people that understand, we'll, we'll know to go around and not congest as much as we can during the construction, because it's going to be.
I understand, this is the project that's needed to be done, 100th Street requires it. But I'm just trying to understand the larger stakes and the amount of traffic that has to work around this.
Yeah, I think in a future work session, it may be helpful if we come back and kind of take a look at what we plan to do on Windsor Parkway to help with traffic congestion. And just report back to council on, on what that looks like, just so that we have, have a better idea once we get that nailed down a little bit.
Yes, that would be wonderful.
Okay.
Quick question. This may be wishful thinking. But since, uh, the bid letting is going to occur late in the year with construction in the following spring, will we get better bid prices?
Well, that's what we're hoping. We, we, we discussed internally, do we just push that back to October and go for an October bid letting? It'll depend on the contractor's plate, how the weather plays into that. Prices when they come in.
So I would suggest if we think we can get a better price by bidding in October as opposed to August, because we're not planning on doing any construction till the following year anyway.
Yeah, if, if we want to push that back, I mean, we would need to not submit plans tomorrow. The, the good thing about that is you may get better pricing, because then your contractor gets a jump on that project versus.
So you, so we think we'll, we'll be just fine.
Yeah, I think, I think, okay, what we actually looked at was to hope to get some of the off-street work done yet this year or even early next year.
Trail, that kind of goes through the office park area. We're just hoping somebody's looking, um, but it's always hard, right? It's up to the contractors. I think what's happened with the private development work and the economy, I think, I think our contractors are a little hungrier now than they were the last two years where we were kind of struggling with pricing. So I, I think that's our best guess is we can get, we can get something good in August and.
And we may get a contractor that's kind of ending up or wrapping down the year and looking towards next year and gets a jump on that too.
All right, oh, that sounds like a good plan. Any other questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, we have a few minutes here yet, do we have anything else we want to cover before?
I could give you my update I was going to give later, if that's okay. Not a lot, I think about 30 seconds here, but just a reminder to council, Bombers Golf will be holding their groundbreaking next Tuesday, April 11th. It's scheduled between 8:00 AM and 10:00 AM. I don't have much more details than that. Uh, but obviously that's pretty exciting for our community. So just a reminder, uh, next Tuesday, April 11th from 8 to 10 at the Bombers site. I've seen the press release on it, but I haven't seen any formal invites to anyone. Um, it's April 11th from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. That's all I have this evening.
Well, adding on to that, the Johnson Grimes Fire Department was out this past week and burned down the building. Looks good over there. No, no incidences involved in that?
Nope, rain went very well and.
Perfect. That was a good sign of progress, which I'll just add, has, has everybody noticed that the Burger King is now down? It's down.
I saw the fences. Wow, that was fast.
One medium sized heat. Yeah, no, it's, uh, it's down today, so raising cane is on its way.
There you go, I would share just.
Raising cane is that?
Raising cane is going to go there. I, I turned to Brian because Brian's the one that's monitoring this very closely.
I have asked every week, that's all.
Brian's children, my children.
I would share, I did spend a afternoon and evening with some of the fire crews. And actually they took me up to the Bombers Golf, um, where they were doing the training. And they actually sent me in with the theatrical smoke and it is very disorienting. I, I can't imagine being a firefighter going into a burning, smoking building because, uh, it, it, you know, you, you think you know where you're at and all you can see is your feet, can't see.
You didn't have a flame in there for him to put out?
No. It was an interesting to see what they got through.
Okay, well, why don't we do council comments, councilman Evans? Councilman ready?
Oh, best, thanks.
Okay.
While we're talking about kind of event schedules, next, also Thursday, April 11th at 4:30, JEDCO is, is hosting a, uh, JEDCO after hours at Impact 7G. So that's at Impact 7G's offices over there, kind of behind Jethro's barbecue. So. Yes, so, well, 86 at Windsor. Yep. Yeah. So at 4:30. So that's a great opportunity to interact with some of the folks who are active in JEDCO. Um, and so encourage folks to attend if they can.
Is that it?
Yep.
Councilman Burkhart.
Um, two, two things real quickly, one of which is a repeat, but now that we're, the first time I made mention of it, it seemed like so long ago. We're now in April and April 29th is the Cultural Day events that are happening at the high school from 2:00 to 8:00 PM. I strongly encourage you to, uh, uh, see all of the different cultural and, and world foods, talents, arts that the students of Johnston High School and Johnston Schools bring to our community. Uh, it certainly enriches that. So I know I had mentioned that before, um, and I can certainly send out an email with that too, so you have it.
What was that time again?
Uh, 2:00 to 8:00 PM, I believe, it stretches for quite a while throughout that time. So. I also do want to say publicly, and, and by golly, I don't know if there's any way we can swing it. Uh, but the Inno Show Choir from Johnston High School, uh, received a wonderful greeting and welcome back home after claiming the National Championship Cup in Branson over the weekend. Besides just their outstanding performance this weekend, um, they stole the show and the trophies everywhere they went this year. And so whatever we can do to recognize them, but all of the, the show choir talent that we have would be. I don't, I don't know if we can wait to recognize them when it gets warmer and make them sing for us outside.
Well, I did alert, I, I got an, uh, a text yesterday alerting me to the, and so I, I contacted Janet right away and said, somehow we need to bring them.
And, and my thanks to the police and to the fire for bringing those buses home. So, uh, that was fantastic. So thank you so much for that. Um, the last comment I'd make very quickly is, uh, you've heard me talk, you've heard many of my colleagues talk about how integral our schools are in defining our community. Uh, and Johnston Schools are something of which I am personally proud, but certainly as a city council member incredibly proud of what they do from an economic. Uh, of what they do from an economic development perspective, from an educational perspective, from a societal benefit perspective. The schools are under a, a lot of pressure these days. And quite frankly, I'd say our state legislature is not treating them as fairly as I'd like them to be treated. But what I guess I want to say more than anything else is that all people in the city of Johnston. Uh, are welcome and should be treated fairly. Um, it doesn't matter how you identify. It doesn't matter, uh, to some extent what your societal or, or economic and social backgrounds, uh, have been in the past. The reality is I want to make sure that all Johnston's feel welcome at all places and at all locations. So. Uh, I, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that, uh, I've got their back.
I think we all share that sentiment. Councilman, uh, Martin.
Uh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to let everybody know that, uh, the Johnston Climate Change Committee. Is hosting with Camp Dodge, a tour of the Camp Dodge. Uh, natural resource areas. It's called Beyond the Barracks. It's on Facebook. Um, I can also happy to send a link to, um. The council and staff if they're interested. Uh, there, we're doing two tours of, like I said, the natural resource areas at the camp. The camp is a wonderful resource for all of Johnston, considering all the animals and plant communities and birds. That use the camp as habitat. Um, and so it becomes like a, it's a bank. It's an, it's a, it's a bank. Where all those wonderful animals and plant communities can survive. And spread out through Johnston. Um, and they've got a very rich diversity of different, um, landscapes there. So it's in the morning, uh, there, there'll be a tour and I can't remember right offhand. Sometime, it's like a half, hour and a half tour. One is at. Like nine or nine thirty and the other one is at like eleven. And, uh, you have to sign up because we have limited space. And then I would like to, um. Reinforce Councilman Burkhardt's comments. About, uh, Johnston being a welcoming place. My, I have two transgendered. Nieces and nephews in the family. And it is disheartening to see the attacks on them at the legislature. Um, along with, um, attacks on SNAP and the families and children that need it. And so. People always send us notes and emails and they call us up and they tell us what they think. So if you also think. We have the same responsibility to. Contact our own state legislature people and let them know what we think. So I. It's the way it works. It's our process. And it affects me when I get emails and phone calls. And so if any of these things are concerning to you, I. Ask that you contact, um, either Representative Andrews or Senators on. Thank you so much.
I'm looking at my calendar. Others have mentioned that there are a number of things coming up. And I would ask, uh, both, uh, council member Burkhardt as well as. Councilwoman Martin to, to send us the information on the two, uh, two events that they mentioned. But we have a lot of things going on this month and I'm. I believe that Janet has sent out, sent out meeting invites to everyone for, for everything that is going on. So I, I won't mention them. I think you're aware of them, but, uh, April is a busy month and May gets even busier. So. With that, we'll, uh, we'll adjourn the work session. We have a few minutes before the regular council meeting starts. So this would be a good time to take a break if you need to take one.